For tonight's regular city council meeting, January 25th, 2016. And please stand and do the pledge of allegiance with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it looks like everyone's present. I would like to say one thing before we get started. I think there's some AP students here tonight. And then, so if we tend to look like we're gonna run a little long, we might take a little quick little five-minute recess.
Resess.
Yeah, just so we can take care of what you need to take care of when you're not out past your time, so.
You may want to take a seat, too. It might be a while. If you want to take a seat, feel free to. There's a couple of D.C.s.
Okay, with the approval of the minutes of January 11th, the last meeting, I apologize that I want to say that now for not being here a couple of weeks ago. Harvey did a very good job of running this meeting. I missed it, being sick. And I chinked to myself that I would never be sick, so knock on wood, this ain't happening again. And you guys are gonna get used to seeing me, because I'm not planning on leaving this seat for a while, so. Do you have approval of the minutes for January 11th, 2016? Does anybody have anything?
They do.
On page 11, and the very first line, the second sentence, she further stated she understand that there's a lack of. It should be understands, just need to add an S. to that. Also on page 11, through at the very bottom in the last paragraph, it's the second line, it says, it's a first sentence, but it's a very long sentence. Impressed with was the common sense of a plan which they were able to carry through. It's T-H-R-U, it should be the actual full word, through. This is texting language, I totally get it, but, full word. On page 12, like to know, not knowing. So if you go to page 12, at the very end, I think it's about six sentences up, council member Dedakis stated she would like knowing, that should be like to know. On page 14. Between the alley, there's two between the alleys, so it's just a double, a duplicate. This should be bullet 11, under discussion regarding delinquent real estate. It's the third line, fourth line down, between the alley, between the alley, just one needs to be removed. Also on page 14, at the very bottom of the page, attorney Wilhelm stated he, any discussion, he should be removed because it doesn't make sense in the sentence. Page 17. Sorry, guys. If you go to page 17, at the very bottom of the page, council member Rizzi stated he received a memo. It should be in regards to limiting the time. And then, just underneath that last one, slippery slope to midnight, doesn't make sense, a slippery slope, and if we need to sit here till midnight, I think is what the sentence should be. Sorry, thanks.
I had spoken with Lisa earlier on page 10. Kivell stated there, we have a first reading of two ordinances, which are, she's got blight, and it should actually be dangerous buildings and international property codes, she's already got that correction. Just a, just a comment, a lot of this stuff, I mean, if you recognize those, if you just call her, then you can reference the stuff at the meeting, the changes, rather than go.
Sorry.
I approve the minutes, if nobody else has got anything.
Does anybody else have anything else?
All right, motion to approve. I'm sorry, I'm not making a declaration.
We have a motion by Kivell and a second by Dedakis.
Aye.
No? Okay, approval of the bills, we have none. So approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, objections?
We have one removal, it is number two under new business, the presentation from Landmark. I received an email today from the developer stating that due to Carmine Avantini's inability to be here because he had a prior commitment, he would prefer to have the item taken off the agenda as he feels that his input would be invaluable to the council and to the developer themselves. And so they're asking for that to be removed, so we'll take that off the agenda. And I believe the city attorney has something he would like to add.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have council add an item relating to the two poverty exemptions that were granted by the December Board of Review for consideration of a motion to waive the attorney-client privilege to allow city manager, city clerk, city attorney, meet with Oakland County Sheriff's Office investigators regarding that matter.
As new business, 10.
Wherever council would like to put it.
If there's nothing else, I approve the agenda, or motion the agenda as amended.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilman Kivell and a second by Councilman Kramer. All's in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Okay. This is the point of the meeting where we have public comment. If you have something that isn't on the agenda this evening and would like to discuss it, bring it up, please leave it brief. And when you do come up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Address.
An address.
Susan Walters Steinacher, I'm from the city of Brighton. I'm here to rebuff statements that were made at your meetings and subsequently posted in your paper in reference to the city of Brighton and something called Blightbusters. This is an excerpt from a city council member to me, that says, "I can tell you with complete confidence that since I have been a council member, there has been no mention or discussion of a Blightbusters team in the city of Brighton. I cannot recall any discussions or comments made regarding any formal or informal plans to address blight in the city of Brighton." Because of this, and the fact that I did forward the things on, this is a DVD, it is dated, it is signed by the city clerk of the city of Brighton, where attorney Paul Burns, who was brought here to speak to you, is questioned about Blightbusters. Mr. Burns states that Blightbusters was a joke. So, to the three of you that voted against hiring Mr. Paul Burns, I want to commend you. Now we're going to discuss the Bonner Homes. The Bonner Homes were tore down this past November. One was 1860, one was 1854. There was nothing wrong with these homes. Two of the city's engineers, Linda Bastista and Ted Dobrowski, both from Tetra Tech, went through those homes, said they were structurally sound. The intention of removing the houses, the documents are in here. I never speak unless I can back it up in writing or on video. I also have the minutes from the DDA meeting of June 17th, 2014, I made numerous copies, one for each one of you, where, in regards to the Birchfield Lot, that's a parking lot behind the Bonner Homes, where it is stated that the city would like to use that lot for parking, but they can't because of the unsafe Bonner Homes. No one went through those houses prior to the court order. The city's very own building inspector walked around the houses, testified in court, documents are in these boxes, of where he states, in fact, that if it looks like a duck, it walks like a duck, and it quacks like a duck, then it's a duck. He red-tagged them then for demolition. Okay? A gentleman by the name Ike Shepard was hired independently to come out to the houses. He is a.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Pardon?
I interrupt for one second.
Yes, please.
Not trying to be disrespectful to you, but I'm trying to try to figure out what all of Brighton's, I'm not questioning any of the things that you've done in Brighton, but this is South Lion.
I do understand, but you had a discussion in regards to hiring Paul Burns, and I just want you to understand that there are things that were said that don't happen in the city of Brighton.
Okay.
Okay? That is my intention.
Okay.
And I really don't want you, so far, it has cost a city taxpayers over $200,000 to Paul Burns, over $200,000. We can't get sidewalks in our town. Paul Burns got $200,000. We can't get this in our town because Paul Burns got over $200,000. I don't want you to end up in the same place that we have ended up right now. We have an awful lot of vacant land, our DDA has purchased a lot of buildings and subsequently tore them down, and they're up for sale, and they can't do anything with them. I don't want you to end up the way we have, okay? 61% of our properties are rental properties, 78% of the people in our city have no children under the age of 18. I just don't want South Lion to end up like we have. It's not a really happy place to live, and I moved there in 1976. So again, I want to compliment or commend those who voted against hiring Paul Burns, because trust me, you don't want to end up like us, okay? We're not happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to leave these with your clerk, if I can, I don't know where your clerk is. Can I walk to her, can she walk to me?
Go ahead.
Well, we're a little different.
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself one more time? Who are you?
I'm with the microphone, please.
Sure.
I am Susan Walters Steinacher. I'm a watchdog for the city of Brighton.
I like you, I was just, I was asking, I'm impressed.
Oh, no, 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 I know my city, there's nothing about my city I don't know.
Where were you, where were you a month ago?
Unfortunately, one of my friends moved here because they didn't like the city of Brighton anymore. They love it here in South Lion. They did not send me your article, the newspaper article, and then I had to do some research, then I wanted to watch the video to see what was said. I almost threw my phone against the wall when I was watching that.
Yeah.
It was very upsetting. And then they subsequently sent me another one, the other newspaper article, and I really wanted to let you know that things are really not what you were told in the city of Brighton.
We like to hear both sides of the story, so thank you for piquing our interest.
Thank you.
You have a beautiful city.
I'd like to know who the councilwoman was that you had suggested that quote was from.
This quote is from James Bohm, Jim Bohm, B-O-H-N, he is on the video.
Oh, because it says councilwoman in your letter to the editor.
Oh, then they wrote it wrong. It is councilman.
Okay, I'm sorry, Jim Bohm?
Bohm, B-O-H-N.
Okay, thank you.
This is his third four-year term on city council. And he was in an agreement, he was one of the council members who agreed to let the Bonners fix their houses up. They did agree to put up a bond, and they did agree to a sunset.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I guess we'll close this portion of the public comment, old business. Do you have anything?
None.
Okay, new business. Received a letter from Holly Giordone for resigning from the Downtown Development Authority, sold her business. She'll be missed.
She will be very missed. She has offered to continue to come and give us advice and make sure that the transition works smoothly. The DDA board has already appointed a new chairman, and we are working on filling the two existing vacancies now.
Luckily, she's still helping with the pumpkin fest committee, so that.
Yeah, she single-handedly forced me to put all those pumpkins and hay bales in the middle of that intersection, by myself. So she will be missed, since no one else helped.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Holly Giordone.
Second.
Go ahead.
And offer thanks as well.
Motion by, go, you have a second?
Maggie.
Maggie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Holly, again. Definitely will miss you. Been good for the committees you've been involved in and the things that you've done for the town, and hopefully we'll get more people stepping up, so. Okay, two's been removed. So number three on this, we have a presentation by the Parks and Recreation Commission requesting action by the council expenditure related to updating the plan for Volunteer Park development.
Diane Beagle, 1089 Chestnut, Secretary, Parks and Recreation Commission.
Erica Wilson, 952 South Parkwood Drive, co, no, I'm vice chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
You all received paper copies of this.
Yes.
First of all, we'd like to thank Amy Allen from South Lion Area Recreation Authority. She used her PowerPoint skills to build this for us, so.
Is what you have on, what we have on paper, is that what we're gonna see on there? Okay, I'm gonna give myself a crack in my neck.
That's why I provided you all of the slides and colors.
So you know, I'm not disrespecting you guys, I just don't want to be able to sleep tonight.
So we're here tonight to catch you up on what we've been doing, looking at Volunteer Park, the development of it, also with other several stakeholders that we have in the community, and you'll see those throughout the presentation. Our objective is to approve an expenditure not to exceed $10,000 for Russell Design, to revise the development plan for Volunteer Park, to include phases of development and provide detailed cost analysis for each phase. And Mark Russell is here tonight with us. What we will be addressing tonight are the stakeholders, reasoning for development, previously approved master plan for Volunteer Park, benefits of city-led initiative, requests for the South Lion City Council, our next steps, and we'll be taking questions. Our stakeholders. The city of South Lion, South Lion Area Recreation Authority, SLARA, South Lion Junior League, South Lion Panthers, South Lion Soccer Club, South Lion Lacrosse Club, South Lion Area Youth. All of these entities use the parks in one way or another, at one time or another, from residents for individual use to family picnics, reunions, birthday parties, all the way through our organized sports in the area. Reasoning for development. Shortage of fields. The South Lion School District includes South Lion, Lion Township, parts of Salem and Green Oak Township. This spans three counties, about approximately 88 square miles. The official number of non-school-controlled athletic fields in this district are eight. There are two baseball fields at McCady Park, two baseball fields, two soccer fields at Volunteer Park, and two baseball fields at Atchison Park. And we're growing. Location. Parents have to drive to different communities for games and practices. I'm not going to read through the slides, everybody can read, I'm going to speak to the slides and mention a few things from them. But right now, with the organizations, and I can speak from experience, my kids came up, or my daughter came up through Panthers, Tom, Chair and Pam. My son did local sports as well, and he also does sports through the schools. It is difficult trying to get your child to one sporting event or to one field to another field. There are multiple fields across the area, not just city of South Lion, but across this, basically the school district, the 88 square miles. We're utilizing different areas, Lion Township Park, at the schools, at different schools. I know with the Panthers, their practice fields are different from where their Palm and Chair was, where their football players were. Softball, baseball, South Lion Junior League. From personal experience, my daughter and I coached her team, we were in one location, my son and my husband were at another location, he coached my son's team. I barely got to see any games that my son played, and it's because of the location, we were spread across the area. Soccer has, I believe, had the same issues as well, you were soccer mom.
Yeah, and soccer games and practices are on different fields, different locations, and now what's happening is soccer's had to move out of the community in order to find fields. And even though our programs are growing, they could be growing even more if we could keep some of the kids who are actually leaving our area to go play elsewhere, if we could keep them in town.
And not only is it inconvenient for families and for the leagues, it's also inconvenient for upkeep of these fields that are used. So the stakeholders that maintain the fields, be it it's the cities maintaining the fields or actually the sports organizations that help with the maintenance of the fields, that maintenance is spread across the area. The economic impact. Through reviewing data of similar-sized communities, the economic impact of hosting an eight-team baseball and/or softball tournament over two days would potentially be 40,000 to 75,000 for local businesses. That include grocery, restaurants, entertainment, fuel, and miscellaneous supplies. Let's face it, we don't always remember everything when we're going somewhere. So you'd stop in at a, you know, a local store to pick up something that was forgotten.
The other benefit, my kids played in a lot of soccer tournaments, and games are spread out over the weekend, so you hang around, you know, from one game to another, and you go to a restaurant, you go to a store, you go take the kids to a park to burn off steam, whatever. So people that come in for a tournament spend a good portion of the weekend in town, and they're spending their money here, so.
Expansion, future expansion, our community is only getting bigger. We've seen the development along Ten Mile, we feel that in our traffic, those are different issues, but it is a growing area, and which is good. It's good for the city, it's good for the schools, it's good for the residents, it's good for the stakeholders. But our current size of our program, South Lion Panthers, there's 460 participants, Junior League, 1,500 participants. Lacrosse, with 277 participants, they're maxed out. They, at this point, cannot get any bigger. South Lion Soccer Club, 300 participants, and the SLARA sports programs, 1,300 participants. Over 3,800 and getting bigger. Schools at its all-time high, the school use of the fields, there's not enough space for everyone. When fields are available, everyone fights for space, and schools are reluctant to let privileged, private organizations utilize them. The schools, their sports are going to come first, and we understand that, so where is the community going to turn to? We are limited, but we do have the room to grow and to meet these needs for the stakeholders. Organizations utilize the following school fields, Bartlett, Brummer, Hardy Elementary, Kent Lake Elementary, Salem and Sayar Elementary, Centennial Middle School, Millennium Middle School, South Lion East High School, and South Lion High. Previously approved master plan for Volunteer Park. This is a previously approved plan that was submitted, Mark, how long ago was this?
June 2014.
Was it, I'm sorry?
June of 2014.
June of 2014. That was, this was a teamed effort with South Lion Panthers, Junior League, soccer, and lacrosse.
Wrestling as well.
They got together with Mark, I'm sorry?
Wrestling.
And wrestling, that's, thank you. And they got together with Mark Russell Designs and, with Russell Designs to develop this master plan, and this is the undeveloped part of Volunteer Park. So this is the south end of Volunteer Park.
This was presented at a council meeting.
The Panther, South Lion Panthers-led initiative paid over $10,000 for preliminary park development plan for Volunteer Park, worked with Junior League, Matt Cat, soccer, and lacrosse organizations. Okay, here's all that information I just spoke about, June 23rd, 2014. Was met with positive reviews and given blessings by council to move forward with the funding. Reason this plan did not progress, lack of funding, scope of work exceeded volunteer capacity because the idea was a grassroots effort to get a lot of this work done. Field usage priority has changed since preliminary plan was completed, and some aspects of preliminary plan were too specific and grand. Benefits of a city-led initiative. Easier communication between all parties, dedicated person, quicker turnaround on decisions, qualified for more fundraising grant opportunities than individual organizations, follows current master plan goals for Volunteer Park development, shows a commitment by the city to make this happen. The cost for modifying the previous plan is something that no one's, now, no single stakeholder organization is able to take on at this time, given that the construction is not a guarantee. All stakeholders are willing and able to help out in any way possible. Request for South Lion City Council. The Parks and Recreation Commission would like city council to approve an expenditure not to exceed $10,000 for Russell Design to revise the development plan for Volunteer Park, to include phases of development and provide detailed cost analysis for each phase. The previous plan was done by Russell Design and was a conceptual design only. A revised plan illustrating phases of development with accompanying detailed cost analysis is needed. The reason why we're requesting that Russell Design continues with this is that they've already done the preliminary work, and they've already done the research, and they've worked with the existing stakeholders. They already have this, all the software, and this is all in their system, and eliminates starting over with another company, and the fees and costs that would be associated with starting over. Contracting with Russell Design allows us to save time and money because they will be modifying an existing plan as opposed to creating a new design from scratch. The new plan would include phases of development as determined by the stakeholders and the city of South Lion. After each phase is determined, a detailed plan and cost analysis would be brought before city council for approval. After approval, we will begin securing funding for that specific phase. The goal is to make development a reality by developing the park phase by phase to make funding more realistic. Next steps after fund approval. The city of South Lion would contact Russell Design to arrange for a revised phase plan for the development of Volunteer Park and detailed cost analysis. The completed plan would then be presented to all parties involved for approval. Determining maintenance needs. In the meantime, stakeholders would meet with South Lion DPW to determine increase in the maintenance cost for this development and research ways to offset this additional annual expense. Some possible, possibilities for helping to offset the costs would be hosting tournaments, which would bring in funds, and continued fundraising by stakeholder groups. And if we think back to the additional ball field at McCady Park, that we do have some invested groups in here that can get it done. Determining funding possibilities. The stakeholders will meet with city of South Lion staff to create a database of possible funding options available. Some possibilities that have been brought up is crowdfunding initiatives, private sponsors and foundations, nationwide recreation foundations, Michigan DNR grants, youth sports foundations, MSHDA, and MEDC. Start to securing funds. After the revised plan is completed, the plan would be submitted to city council for approval. Upon approval, the committee can start securing funds of Phase 1 of development. That can begin submitting grants, then create crowdfunding campaigns, contact specific foundations with requests, and reach out to specific companies with financial requests. Once funding is secure for Phase 1, break ground on Phase 1. Thank you for your consideration, and we'll take questions at this time.
Yes. I have some questions, but I also have some feedback. And I want to say thank you for bringing this before this. I think it's great that you're asking for support, and I think that we, as a city, owe it to the children and our soccer teams and all the sporting teams to show that we're committed. committed to them by moving forward with this project. So I think this is great that we can form some sort of a partnership, so I'm all for it. Just want to point out a few things. Mat Cat Wrestling, we had a record turnout, I mean, record sign-up this year. It's exploding. Lacrosse in this city is exploding. Ten years ago, that wasn't even a huge sport. Now, it's, it's, and everything is growing, so. And I can speak personally to the need for fields. You go on any Sunday during the fall, and they have the flag football tournaments, and every single field is utilized. So we need to get more fields in Volunteer Park so we can expand that even more. One thing I did think about was the economic impact, and I don't think that can be really, you can't overstate it too much. Like Diane said, people come in with, for tournaments, and they, they need to eat. They may be there the whole weekend. I remember growing up, playing sports, and you'd be gone the whole weekend, and you'd visit the restaurants, and you'd see something you like, and who knows, you may come back another weekend. And it also speaks to where I see our city going forward. I see us getting more involved with weekend activities. Maybe it's festivals, maybe it's, you know, spanning the farmer's market, more outdoor events, craft shows, tournaments. That's part of it. That's what we need to do. So with that being said, that's my feedback, but I do have a question specifically, maybe for Lynn, regarding the agreement that we have regarding the fields, because I want to get this moving as soon as possible. My understanding is that the agreement with the current farmer, it's up, it go, it needs to be renewed in April?
Yes.
Excuse me. So, so how would the timeline work if we want to?
Well, if you proceed, what we would do is sign not more than a one-year agreement, giving the organizations opportunity to finalize the phased development as well as begin their fundraising for Phase One, and at the end of that year, if they have the funding put together to begin Phase One, we would begin the development.
Okay. Because what I'm getting at is here it is February, so I'm just a little concerned if it may be tight meeting that, I mean, obviously we'd be looking to next year, but so, we'd have to say, I want to get those conversations started now, so there's no surprises. Because one of the things that I had a disappointment with was, was it two thousand and fourteen? We had this exact same conversation, you know, different scenario, but it feel, I feel like, you know, the previous administration kind of dropped the ball in really running with it and take it to the next step. Because we talked about the same conversation, when is the contract up, what are the steps, and I really think the city let you down. So my request would be for Lynn really to take this on and start having those conversations, and, you know, that we, City Council approves this expenditure today. Thank you.
Just in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm actually on the board of Panthers, and I know our organization has been trying to do something with this for the last couple of years. I work with Jason all the time, Lapurna, who's the president of the Panthers, and since I'm the treasurer, I know how much money we have. I know Dean Whitcomb's here, he's part of South Lyon Junior League. I know Dean and I have had discussions about Volunteer Park and how much each organization might be willing to contribute. What's different about this initiative is that you actually have organizations wanting to help pay for the development of Volunteer Park. These organizations have money set aside, and I can't speak officially on behalf of the Panthers, but I know we have some money set aside. Sorry, Jason. But the bottom line is, we've been discussing this, and we had some issues about who's gonna take the lead. I think this is a great idea that it's going through the Parks and Rec now. Parks and Rec is actually requesting us to make a, to name somebody from the city to be the point contact so we can get this going. Because you're right, we have, we have parents in our organization that are going to what I affectionately refer to as the dump, dropping their kids off there, then having to high-tail it to South Lyon East to drop off their kids there, and then high-tail it to South Lyon High School to drop off their kids there, and it's a nightmare. It'd be nice if we could have, you know, at least through Phase One, have practice fields, have baseball fields. I know we worked very well with the Junior League on getting that other field developed at McCady Park, that was smooth, it went quickly, but with, with the city taking the lead, I think that was what we really needed to have this worked out with Parks and Rec, having you come for us saying, this is great, let's do it, let's name somebody, let's do it. So I'm all for it. I mean, to me, ten thousand dollars to develop Volunteer Park, which we purchased for this exact reason. Great idea, and with having organizations wanting to help the city develop it, you can't pass it up. So I commend you for bringing it again, and I hope we can get this going sooner than later. Thank you.
I think, I'd like to speak on this for a second. I mean, it's, and Meg, I'll get you next. This speaks, you know me, so I've been around a long time, I'm old enough. So I was part of the Panthers for a long time, I know exactly what you're going through. My kids came all the way up through the system here for many, many years, and we fought for fields like there was no tomorrow, and it never really got solved. And I think what's getting missed, Councilman Rizzi kind of hit on this, is that with all the talk about all the kids today that aren't getting involved in sports and activities, look what's going on here. You know, so I totally believe that we need to stand behind this because it is a big problem, you know, and any parent that, any kid doesn't understand it maybe yet, but you will as you get older, how hard it is that your parents are running you from one end of the planet to the other to get you to the fields on time, and then to pick you back up again, so they don't get in trouble. And I think if we could figure out a way to utilize some of the spaces that we already have, namely Volunteer Park, much more efficiently, I, I don't see anything bad behind that. So commend you guys for doing this and bringing it to us like this, and it's a good presentation. So that's my take. Councilman, that's all.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome. It's wonderful to see you again. I came from the Park and Rec Commission, and I remember when we had that wonderful mayor, Jeff Potter, who Jeff put me on Park and Recs and said, I need to do something with you, and he put me in Park and Recs. And for years and years, we tried to get funding, as you know, with, so I've been with you. So this is really an organization that is close to my heart. Clearly, I think this is an opportunity for the city to develop something that not other communities have. The competitive edge is closing in on South Lyon, and we're not winning. And this is an opportunity for South Lyon to win. This is an opportunity for us to develop Volunteer Park and to provide a very competitive edge with respect to our surrounding communities that don't have a facility like this. You know, I'm gonna keep saying it by mantra, you know, learn how to compete and do it well, because we haven't done it well in the past. And this is a prime opportunity to get out in front of competition, because there's a lot of land around us in Lyon Township and Green Oak, that I think if you get this on the board and get this going, this, this could be just a real jewel in the community. Additionally, I think with, with this particular item, I do have some questions regarding the plan, so I wanted to ask you about it. I noticed that you have walking trails in here, because I, I know that there are individuals in the community, for example, George Foman, and a couple neighbors that are on my street, Evelyn and Phil, that are very, very pro-walking trails and have been upset with some of the disturbance over there in Volunteer Park. So I would like to, can you give me a little bit of a discussion, are walking trails gonna be preserved? Because this is pretty important to individuals who, who want that walking trail component.
I believe George was in on some of the planning of this.
Yeah.
Was he?
Yes.
I want to make sure George, George's interests are protected here in this. So if someone could speak to that, that'd be great.
Sure, thank you. Mark Russell with Russell Design.
Oh, perfect.
One-one-four, excuse me, Raceon Street in Northville. Walking trails will be a part of the plan. We're not certain as to what phase they would occur, but certainly if we're gonna go after state funding or federal funding, it is paramount that we have alternative recreation opportunities. They will most likely not fund athletic fields. So we have to have something in there for the community. These would be accessible paths, some would be paved, some would be mulched path or crushed stone, we're not certain at this point. But the idea is that they would access these lower-lying areas. We can't really develop fields there economically, and certainly from the environment standpoint, we want to preserve as much of that as we can, because I think that enables us also to utilize that natural feature to help us, assist us in, in the draining of the fields, so we can use that as well.
The other thing that I wanted to ask about is, in terms of the plans here, will you have things, is this intended to have like night lights? Do you have lights there for night play in the summertime? I don't see why not.
We discussed that a little bit. In fact, if you look at the soccer field, or the, excuse me, the football field, the stadium, if you will, in the, in the lower left-hand corner, there is some indication that there are light fixtures there. But certainly we have to do some photometric studies on that going forward in the detail plans, and, and paying attention, obviously, to our neighbors.
And what about stands?
Yep, there would be stands. I think there's, we talked a little bit with the committees and some of the stakeholders about movable bleachers. We, we did talk in this particular scheme of creating a stadium and more permanent seating. I'm not sure that that's still on the table, but I think that there will be some, some significant seating, but probably more to the point where it's gonna be portable so that the fields can be multipurpose.
Well, I take it that these fields are gonna be used for tournaments, et cetera? You're gonna have tournament play there?
We hope to.
Okay, because, because that's gonna be really key.
Yep.
You know, I mean, you can't have tournament play unless you have stands.
Understand.
I mean, I hate to say it, but you know.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. I, I really respect that, and I, we will. We just don't know exactly, you know, how many seats, are they three, three tiers and, you know, fifteen feet long, or are they twenty-five feet long and, and six tiers? So we'll just, certainly as budget allows, and certainly as the operation of the parks maintenance staff can move, move those around successfully, and certainly working with the stakeholder groups too to assist us in that.
Well, you have a nice design, you're a good designer, so.
Thank you very much.
One, one comment, is this was the conceptual plan, and, and needs have changed, so this is not what the final plan is going to look like. In fact...
Yeah, it's, it's basically, we don't have a pointer, do we?
Yeah, no, no.
It's, it's essentially, the pathways will, will stay as much as they can. You know, we might encroach on those a skinch, but for the most part, the fields are gonna be thrown into a bag and, and jumbled around a little bit.
Perfect.
Yep.
The, the other comment that I wanted to make is that, I don't know how it's done or who is responsible, maybe all of us are, is that the city of Milford has been so fortunate to have the corporate contributor LaFontaine, and what, and, and I just really have to thank the LaFontaine family, the dealership family, the car family, for the phenomenal community commitment that they've made to Milford, and with their new amphitheater in, in downtown Milford. It's phenomenal what that family has done, and they don't even have a LaFontaine dealership in Milford. This is a family that, for whatever reason, has picked Milford, and that's something that, that South Lyon really has not done, is they have not gone on, gone out and developed those kinds of partnerships and relationships with corporate sponsors that could get on the bandwagon. It's a real weakness in, in whether it's the downtown or developing Volunteer Park, it, it's a, it's a sorry weakness, because you can see what corporate sponsorship can do. So I would hope somewhere along the line that corporate sponsorships and reaching out and networking and partnering with people can help us, because this is just a phenomenal development that has to be built. It has to come to South Lyon. We cannot let this go to another community.
That's all right, Tim.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. If we approved this, what's the timeline we're looking at as far as how much time is gonna make you to do, or to take to do at least the design, maybe for Phase One? I mean, not to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah, I mean, you did.
Tomorrow?
You know, I mean, it, it's, it's gonna be a few months, we'll say. I mean, I think we really need to sit down and talk about corporate sponsorship, talk, talk to the stakeholders, and really understand their needs. You know, we know all the field sizes, we can flip stuff around pretty quickly, come up with some different scenarios, but that's gonna be the biggest, and trying to understand, you know, what those needs are, and then, and then how they, how they can coexist. Because you have certain things going on during the same day, during the same time. We have a lot of traffic coming in and out, you know, hopefully, but we have to be able to, to navigate that in the park, the existing park, as well as the future park. So there's, there's some work to be done. I, you know, I, I don't know how many months, I mean, I think the, the first thing kicking off is that we would have a, we'll call it a focus group, or a kickoff meeting with all the stakeholders, and hopefully we can get, you know, it's been a little bit trying to get some of those folks together, at least in a majority, but that would be our hope, to get as many together as we can, and if we have to work with isolated groups, we'll do that, just to try to keep the ball moving. But it's our, it's our hope, and, and we're driven as much as, as you folks are as much.
Now, would Parks and Rec be, as far as how we're doing this right now, would you be the lead in setting up these meetings so that we could, you know, it'd be still through the city?
Yeah.
At least one of the commissions, so we'd know what was going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. And we'd speak with Lynn as well, and Amy, I know, wants to be involved, Amy Allen wants to be involved.
Okay.
She's been a great asset.
All right, and he has a larger checkbook than we do, so.
Chew your leg.
Can I say a few words?
Come on up, come on up.
I'm Dean Whitcomb, two-five, eight-eight-five McCroy Lane in Lyon Township. I'm a member of the South Lyon Junior League Board, and was last in front of you all when we added a field at McCady, and thanks for the partnership. I think that went great, and it's been an awesome addition to the community. Speaking for the Junior League, we have an outstanding relationship with city, specifically that guy over there, he's a rock, he's a rock star. And we work very well together to not only maintain, but improve the current fields. And just a couple points, I, I think that this is a home run, excuse the analogy, because it, it drives you towards what's on paper as far as the master plan, and that's, that's who we want to be. I think that the 2014 plan was a bit grandiose, and I think everybody realizes that. I think one of the important things to remember is, is while the, the request for funds tonight is fairly small, you're, don't waste it, because you're, you're heading down a seven-figure path eventually, and that requires the city to be out front. There's a ton of partners ready to roll, but bottle drives and car washes aren't gonna get us, aren't gonna get us here. It's, it's donor money, it's grant money, which is why it's so important that the city is the point in the, in the funnel for everything with this. The, the grant access alone, through being a city-led effort, is so much more than a private-led effort. The other thing too is, to your corporate funding, we have to have a plan. While we create a legislative PowerPoint, we need a funding PowerPoint, and that has to have a plan. And I think phases makes it smaller bites, makes it more manageable, and I think it's a win for everybody. So in particular with the Junior League, we're at fifteen-hundred members, and we are busting at the seams. And we're working with everybody and anybody that'll listen and, and help turn our one-dollar into two and, and go build some fields, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
I'll take it.
Yeah, I've got a couple questions. This whole concept was just that, it was a concept so that we were able to fulfill our five-year update on the master plan, and the rec master plan, as well as give us an opportunity to submit for grants. Did you guys ever conceive of any grant that might end up being ripe for us? Did you pursue looking for grants at all?
Oh.
I mean, I, I'm not trying to, to hang you out, I'm just wondering.
That the initiative of, for this part of the master plan that was done with Russell Designs was a grassroots effort through the sports organizations, and then they brought it to Parks and Rec. As far as seeking any grant at this time, no, because we really don't have anything to stand on to get a grant.
Yeah, we kind of stalled out. Once we got this plan and everybody approved it, the, the plan itself was too big, and we needed to break it down, and because to submit for a grant, we needed a detailed construction phase.
But the, I mean, the update was just sort of a gloss over, you really didn't go into any detail that we would be, would be necessary?
Once we got to this part, we didn't, it was just, it wound up being too big, and it just kind of fizzled out.
Right.
Because we couldn't, we didn't have the information or the effort to break it down into the smaller pieces that needed, so.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, we own the file for the plan, right? It's our plan. Okay. So the idea that Mr. Russell has that in his possession really isn't consequential. I mean, you could give that file to any designer, they could end up making that modification. And the only reason I bring that up is, we typically obligate contracts to be, you know, bid out for at least three bids. So I, what is the, outside of the little bit that you had spoke to earlier, I mean, I understand, and I think that it's valuable that they, you've already got a relationship with the, the groups that are going to participate in supplementing or funding this, this kind of a thing, and that meet their needs, which is, that's a valuable thing, you know, to already have a relationship and an understanding of what their objectives are. But save for that, I don't really see where there's anything that's, that distinguishes Mr. Russell from another to... But save for that, I don't really see where there's anything that's, that distinguishes Mr. Russell from another designer. I mean, any designer under, that does this type of work would end up being able to recognize the value and, and the need for...
I understand that, but, um, you're, you're gonna speak to a bidding process, correct? That's where you're leading with?
Correct.
And what is the timeframe for that bidding process?
Well, you're not breaking ground for easily a year, I mean...
Oh, I understand that, but, but, but we're not gonna break down, ground until we get more money other than the, you know, the ten thousand dollars to help further this design.
So, what's the urgency of the, the plan? That's what I'm getting at.
So... But the bidding, are you referring to the bidding process to update and revise this plan? Are you referring to a bidding process down the road?
No, for the plan.
For the plan itself, so?
We don't have anything to bid right now, except for the plan.
Right, so are you referring to the bidding process for revising this plan?
That's correct.
Okay, so what is the length of time for the bidding process?
Oh, I don't know. What, what's a typical letting of bids? I mean...
Well, we would have to go through and develop the, develop the request for proposal, um, send it out. Normally has to be posted for something of this size for thirty days. And then you have the bid opening, bid tabulations, and... So, you're looking at at least three months for the bidding process?
Okay, so nothing's happening for a year. I'm... Just let me do my thing, all right? You guys had plenty of time to talk. Just give me a moment.
Glenn, I'm just saying, I think the Panthers own the plan, the conceptual plan, because we pay for it. The city didn't pay for that one, so I just...
Okay, the Panthers own it.
Yeah, the Panther on the...
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
No, no, that's absolutely important. I mean, we don't have any say in that thing.
Right.
Uh, okay. This, uh, I'm assuming that the relationship for all these structures would end up being exactly the same as the relationship with McCatty. We would actually own everything and we have a contractual agreement with the groups to be able to access those, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. I, I mean, obviously, we, we want to move forward on, on this whole thing. That's why we bought this big old chunk of dirt, was to afford ourselves exactly this opportunity. Uh, but I, I also have some concerns about us being the sole provisioner, two fields in Atchison Park. We're the sole provisioner outside of that for the entire community. And the schools have divested themselves substantially from being the providers of any recreation opportunities. And, um, and that causes me concern. We're three and a half square miles. Everybody around us is, what is it, sixty-eight or eighty-eight mu, square miles or something? And we're going to end up taking a pretty significant, uh, proportion of our, our property to end up providing parkland. When you're in the big boy seat, that's kinda what you have to do. You, I, we can't rely on them doing that. I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that townships need to be pressured as well to hold up their end of the deal, so. The, uh, the path thing, if you remember, Mr. Russell, we, when we talked about that initially, this was actually a structured path that might end up being able to fulfill ADA compliancy and stuff like that, right? Yeah. Okay, now, there was also some talk of a more natural path, which Mr. Foman was, was primarily interested in, where you're actually just kinda, you carve a notch through the shrubbery and stuff, I think so. And you had suggested that there, there was ample room to be able to do that where you're, you're able to essentially remove the view of the, the developed portion in some of the, the perimeter of that property.
I think so.
Yeah, I, I know there's wetlands and things like that and we had talked about maybe bridges and things, but, yeah, okay. Okay, this is just my two cents worth, but the stadium thing, I think, is preposterous. For the, the amount of money that would end up being sunk into that, that little plot of land, uh, the, the seats that, um, you know, that most communities, even some lesser enthusiastic high schools have, you know, are perfectly ample for doing what we do. We have the benefit of, we have two beautiful high schools with these colossal stadiums that the Panthers get to enjoy the benefit of. Um, I don't, I don't want us to end up spending that kinda money just so on a Saturday, people have this, this... It'd be cool if we had money coming out of our ears, but this is a very expensive endeavor. So, I'd like us to try to be as realistic with, with this as we can. And in the event that suddenly we come into a, a whole lot of dough, we could always modify things, so. Well, okay, I, I certainly am, am not interested in trying to prohibit this thing from moving forward. I just wanna... This needs to be looked at in an adult way. This isn't the only thing that the city's got financial responsibility to, so. All those groups that are going to participate in this thing really need to step forward. And I'm, I'd like to find, is there a, what was the vehicle that we had with, with Junior League as far as the obligation? You guys had potted gold that you already, that gave you the half of your, your end of the deal.
Yep, again, speaking for the Junior League, we've created a budget, um, where we're currently able to put away for, for capital expenditure projects approximately thirty thousand dollars a year. And, and we're very anxious to spend that, obviously, for additional fields.
Well, this is a great return on that investment.
For sure, for sure, as was McCatty.
Right, right.
To a couple of your points, uh, we, again, speaking for the Junior League, we're in active discussions with Lyon Township as well on park development with them at Eleven in Milford and also behind the Fire Hall. There's lots of politics everywhere, so some things move faster than others, but they are talking about it for whatever it's worth. And to your football stadium comment, my last conversation with Jason Laperna from, uh, Panthers, he's the president, he would probably one-hundred percent agree with you on that. So, I don't think you're gonna see anything near that in phase one, two, or three, uh, from all the discussions.
I mean, you could do an awful lot of adorning without having that stadium quality kinda of a finish, so, yeah.
That's where the word grandiose comes from.
Pretty much. Yes, uh-huh, I agree.
I mean, it's nice to have the field houses, you know, and all that. I know all those, in the past, how they are when we had them. And we know some worse, but it wasn't quite that way.
Had you provided restrooms or, or some kinda like a snack bar type of a thing?
Throughout the park, or is it?
Throughout the park.
Yeah.
What's the middle section right there where the baseball?
Oh, no, we were thinking that would be concessions, uh, some storage and some bathrooms.
Certainly, storage is a, a great idea. You know, we just kinda went through this whole raft of, of stuff about food trucks. I mean, this seems like a, an ideal location for food trucks to get purchase and service your, your guys' events, so.
One of the other nice parts about doing this in phases is that there are multiple stakeholders. And if phase one was football fields, the Junior League's probably walking that way. Where we think, you know, for example, that quad set of fields, phase one could be a field of that quad and practice fields for football and soccer and lacrosse, and it keeps all the stakeholders engaged.
That makes sense, certainly, right.
Yeah, and what's, what's unique about this proposal is that the youth groups, sports groups, uh, that are involved in this are very active with one another in having open discussions about what we can do, what we can afford, what we should focus on. And plus, you have more checkbooks than just the city, which is huge.
Oh, absolutely.
Back up to these projects.
You know, Mike, that's kinda what was lacking, I think, in the past when our other kids were growing up and they're now, the little ones are doing this, was where we had a lot of commitment from a lot of the parents and we had a lot of organizations, but we seemed to all fight with each other, opposed to actually work together. And that's the reason why we didn't have the fields or anybody wanting to commit to do anything. And here, it seems like, as Councilman Kramer's saying, we have groups wanting to step up and actually do something now, which is great to hear because this is going to just keep exploding to a huge proportion with the amount of kids that are involved. And just Panthers alone is one heck of an organization. And, uh, the amount of kids that are within the cheerleading, the palm, the, you know, the, uh, football. Everything. It's just, it amazes me how many kids are in it compared to where, when we started. And, uh, they have the benefits of playing at these high schools. It's not gonna always go on because they're advancing to the amount of kids that are participating at those facilities as well and it's just straining the system. I agree with Councilman Kimmel that everybody needs to step up and do their part, but I do believe that somebody's gotta take the lead on this or we're all gonna keep around dancing around this.
But we can't control what other communities are doing, but I just want these guys to end up staying vigilant and pushing.
I, I agree with you on that one-hundred percent, but I still think we should, you know, definitely, with the amount of kids that are in this town and the way that we participate with our kids, um, there, and I, I think it's paramount that we get involved in something like this, so this is my opinion.
Um, I would like to make the motion, but I do have a question regarding...
Um, I, I have, I did a little bit of research and, uh, I apologize to council that I didn't have the actual ordinance in front of me when we were talking about the Paul Burns Law Firm with respect to R, um, RFPs. So, I went into the Code of Ordinances and I sort of took a look at that issue as to whether or not you need an RFP, because that is coming up for me as I'm doing research for grants for, uh, the art, uh, council. And I'd like everyone to sort of take a look at section two-dash-two-two-four of the Michigan Code of Ordinances. I always like to go to the ordinances first. Um, I think that's always a good place to get a little bit of direction. And with respect to the bidding process, it does say that where expenditures or a contract, and, and let me backtrack a little bit. The reason I sort of had a suspicion that we might have an ordinance of this nature is because, um, I was involved in an issue probably about eight months ago where we had to go to the city's ordinance with respect to, um, a, a bidding for some services. And they had a ordinance such, which is very similar to this. And this ordinance says, where such expenditure contract exceeds five thousand dollars, so this obviously would exceed five thousand dollars in terms of getting the money to go ahead and have the update done, it shall be subject to competitive bidding as herein, uh, prescribed. But this, but the ordinance also provides you with some exceptions out of the, the, the normal competitive bidding. And that says, where, uh, the council shall determine that no advantage to the city would result, and I actually read minutes of a city that I was doing the work in, where council actually said on the record, we do not find that there is any advantage to the city, that the bidding shall go out or where the expenditure or the contract is for professional services. Now, clearly, the Paul Burns Law Firm would have fallen under professional services, just like with Mr. Russell, um, the professional services, uh, also that you would be rendering. And one thing I can tell you is that your design is good, you have the experience. So, even though the city doesn't own it, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that an RFP is not always required if you can meet the conditions in the ordinance. And, and it's clear, uh, some people weren't aware of that. So, if you go to two-dash-two-two-four, um, and if you have someone that does have professional services, uh, clearly, uh, that's specific to a particular job. The RFP process, um, and the, and the intent behind this is that the RFP process is not necessarily conducive to getting you the professional services that may be extremely desirable for a very specific project. So, this gives you an out. So, I'd like council to keep that in mind, so, thank you.
Well, my question was, since I believe the Panthers have already paid for the conceptual design, would it be, in, in this case, if the Panthers were to say, hey, we've already paid for the conceptual design, if you're gonna use modifications off that design that's already been paid for, is it something that we can go with, um, Russell Design and not have to do an RFP?
You don't have to.
I know, I understand that, but my point is, that's what I'm trying to make. I was gonna make...
I'm not losing sleep about it.
Neither.
Yeah, okay. It was just kinda...
That's, I was gonna make the mo, motion based on what, uh, Parks and Rec Committee was asking us for, but it was for Russell Design and I just wanted to see if...
Okay, all right, then, subject to that, I'll make the, uh, motion that we approve an expenditure not to exceed ten thousand dollars for Russell Design to revise the development plan for a volunteer park.
Second. You have two seconds here. One more comment. I just, I'd like to thank you guys for your tenacity hanging in there. I, I too had been on Parks and Rec and I understand how thankless the job can be when you endlessly spin plans that never come to fruition. It's, it's a very difficult thing to stay engaged and you guys have been champions of this for a long time. And I, I'd like to thank you for sticking with it, so.
Thank you. Yes, um, I, uh, would, I, we're in the discussion part now with the motion and I would also support the motion and find that, that, that there is really no advantage to the city that would require, uh, this particular, uh, professional service to be bitted out due to the unique nature of the services being provided.
Yeah, um, I feel the same way. I mean, you go with, we've already worked with, with, with the same firm, so I think it would just, we should not switch. But I did have a question, uh, earlier, just about the, uh, I know it's still conceptual and you're gonna have to redesign. I, I get that and I'm not gonna hold you to this, but I do just wanna make the comment just regarding the fields. One of the advantages of football and soccer and lacrosse is I think those fields can be intertwined and can be multipurpose. So, with the baseball fields, just based off of the previous plan, I'm, if I correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm counting four and then, what is it, eight or nine other fields? So, I just wanna make sure baseball's getting a fair share. What was your thoughts with how you would, um, that, divide up the fields, just to make sure it's even across the board?
I'm not sure, yeah. I mean, that, that's what we need to discuss and, and certainly, um, I think it's gonna be predicated on dollars and, uh, going forward, how much we can afford at phase one.
Okay.
Keeping everybody happy, right?
And I know you, you guys are all working together really well. I just wanted to point out that I think...
Dean, Dean was involved heavily in this plan as, as well as the Panthers and, and lacrosse, every, everybody. And it was a great group, it really was. And I think that the plan is a, um, you know, a compilation of, of that effort.
Okay.
I think one suggestion, just from past experience, and you probably can attest to this too, I like seeing the baseball fields kind of on their own because when they combined with the other fields, specifically soccer, we ended up with soccer nets in the middle of the baseball fields, ended up losing the field, the baseball fields to soccer. And no dis, no disrespect to the soccer flight fans, cause there's probably more, but to have separate facilities for, or separate fields for them alleviates that situation, which allows everybody to come back together and work on this entire project together. And I think that in the past was part of the reason why we had trouble coming together, so.
And I think to, to, uh, Councilman, number, Councilman, number, Rizzi's point, I think the fields are multipurpose.
Yeah.
You know, they, they are not intended to be football field, practice fields or otherwise. They're large enough for soccer and lacrosse themselves. Um, and, you know, you can cross-play on them as well, so you don't get wear in the bowl mouth, so, you know, so you have a, more of a longevity, uh, you know, in the maintenance, uh, skills.
And I do wanna say, uh, I may also, I think it's good having, uh, Bob on board with the DPW cause obviously there's gonna be a lot of maintenance that comes with raking four new ball fields and... But I think we should take it on and be very welcoming and I think that's great.
You're planning on being in your drill about ninety, right?
Yeah. I feel like I am. I think it's gonna be a partnership of the city and with the, with the organizations. I think the organizations are committed, you know, to getting this done as well.
Okay, we have a motion? Second?
Seconded.
I think everybody seconded.
We have a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I think I wanna take about a five-minute recess right here, just so we can let the AP students...
That's a good idea.
Come up and, uh, do what they need to do, so we don't drag them out for the rest of the meeting. We're getting close, so this, this was a very good presentation, but I wanna take a rest so they can...
Sorry, I'm still editing my code.
How are you? Good. Great. No fun anywhere? Does it matter?
Field too.
Who's your teacher?